I'm calling to order the Town of Corder Madara Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 26, 2018. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Metcalf, Commissioner Bundy, Commissioner Chase, Commissioner Friedman, Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Record will show that Commissioner Metcalf is absent.
She, I believe, is ill tonight, so I hope she recovers and she'll be with us shortly. But we do have something to say about Jennifer Friedman next to me.
Okay.
So, she's been an amazing member of the commission, and she's decided not to pursue. With her absence, we're going to get Margaret Bandell, which is also exciting. But Jennifer is who we want to appreciate tonight, and she's been thoughtful and resolute. And we have a resolution here to present her, and I'm going to pass it between the other commissioners that are here tonight. This is a resolution of the Corder Madara Planning Commission expressing appreciation to Jennifer Friedman for her outstanding service to the Town of Corder Madara as a member of the Planning Commission. Whereas Jennifer Friedman served with distinction on the Corder Madara Planning Commission for two years, from July 2016 through June 2018. And...
Whereas Jennifer generously contributed her valuable expertise and point of view as a real estate investment management and development professional in matters of responsible and appropriate development. And...
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madara hereby expresses its...
You didn't read all the other stuff about me.
Where...
There's more.
Oh.
Thoughtfully considered.
Oh.
[laughing].
Whereas Jennifer thoughtfully considered all aspects of every project heard before the commission, listening attentively to the opinions of applicants and residents so that all parties received a fair, open-minded, and respectful hearing. And whereas Jennifer brought her calm, attentive demeanor and a pragmatic approach to all Planning Commission proceedings and consistently advocated for projects that will have a lasting positive impact on the community. And...
And whereas Jennifer also always brought her delightful personality, congeniality, mutual respect, and consideration of others' viewpoints to all Planning Commission meetings. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madara hereby expresses its deep gratitude for Jennifer Friedman's contribution and leadership as a member of the Planning Commission. And it doesn't say here "while raising kids." So, be it further resolved that the Planning Commission wishes Jennifer and her family the best of luck and happiness in their future endeavors. So, do we have a vote on this? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
All right.
I second the motion.
All right.
Voice vote. Aye. All right. Passed and adopted by the Planning Commission of the Town of Corder Madara at a regular meeting thereof held on the 26th of June 2018 by the following vote. Aye. Jennifer, thank you for your presence.
Thank you very much.
And contributing to the town. I appreciate it, and, you know, hopefully you'll...
We will be in touch.
Come back and visit us in one way or another.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So... If anyone else wishes to say anything, we open up the meeting for public comment. Right now, you have three minutes on any subject that is not on the agenda. And there's only one person who might do that tonight, and that's Margaret. But other than that, like I say, no contributor. So, we will have no further public comment. Tonight, we have two hearings. One is 56 Madera Boulevard. This is the Best Western in Corder Madara Inn, public hearing for consideration and possible approval of sign permit application PL-2018-0049 for modifications to existing freestanding pylon sign at 56 Madera Boulevard, Best Western Corder Madara Inn. So, everybody's familiar with this sign. It's been there a long time. So, Adam, would you please...
I think I have to recuse myself first.
Oh, you do. That's right.
From this...
Jennifer must be absent.
I'll be back. Because I live within 300 feet of the Corder Madara Best Western, I will be recusing myself from this issue.
All right. So, that means that on this matter, we'd have to be a 3-0. Is that correct? Or a 2-0?
No, it's a majority of the commission present.
Great.
And we have a quorum, so that's okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, tonight, we have a public hearing for modifications to that existing freestanding pylon sign that is located adjacent to the highway at 56 Madera Boulevard. And as we all know, it's the Best Western Corder Madara Inn site. This is a pixelated image of the existing freestanding sign that exists up there. It's actually...today actually has...this isn't going to work on that again, but let me see if I can get the mouse. This is an image of the existing sign looking at the south-facing fascia of the sign itself. The sign is double-faced, so it has also the same image, same signs, on the northern-facing portion of the sign. The sign was originally erected and approved by the town in 1976/77. And it was designed...the sign height and the size of the area of the sign was approved at that time and has not changed since. What has changed since 1976 has actually been the designs within or the designs of the sign themselves. And that has changed as the corporate logo for Best Western has changed over time. And along with the corporate logo for Best Western, the Corder Madara Inn portion of that sign has also changed along with it to better reflect the Best Western corporate logo. There's the bottom portion of the sign likewise, since its inception in 1976, originally was the Pepper Mill sign, as those many of us, even myself, can recall when it was the Pepper Mill and I visited with my folks. But has changed as well over time as the tenant, the restaurant tenant, has been changed over time. So, currently, as there is no restaurant tenant and there's not intended to be a tenant, it's blank at the bottom portion. That's why you see the bottom portion of the freestanding sign fascia blank there. And I was going to...oh, and actually, the most up-to-date would reflect that actually the portion of the sign, the actual Best Western, when you go out there today, this has actually been removed. And so, this is just a white blank area today. That was done as they put up...I would say note in the staff report, the new corporate logo has been placed on other locations on the project site. There's a freestanding sign at the entrance, and then there's a wall sign on the western-facing facade of the...I'm sorry, the eastern-facing facade of the lobby structure. And so, as they put up those new corporate logos, this one came down. The request by the applicant today is for modification to this, the sign design. And there are several...let me see. And it's to replace that sign with...I'm sorry, here's an image actually showing the night view of that same sign when it actually had a restaurant tenant, and that's taken in 2014. But the application today is to replace and modify the sign design to a new Best Western sign that looks like this. This has been rolled out, basically Best Western is requiring all of its hotels that associate with the Best Western brand to change their signage to the new logo, corporate logo, which this is the Best Western. There's a blue scheme, and then the Best Western Plus, which is a brown scheme. Those have been rolled out. You can see it up in Novato off the highway, the Best Western Plus there. Up in Petaluma, they've changed out their signs, the pylon signs and so forth. And actually, I think I was in Florida, when I was in Florida on vacation, I saw a couple as well, and I caught my attention that they've rolled out the new corporate logo that looks like this. Essentially, the proposal is to replace what's on the upper portion of the sign, the upper left here, and enlarge the area devoted to the Best Western brand to about 80% of the sign fascia and move sort of the area devoted to Corder Madara Inn down to the bottom of the sign here. And what essentially replaced what was previously three different signs. There's this one, this one, and then the restaurant signage into one sign area. The dimensions of the sign are in your materials and are shown here in this slide as well. Just to note, there are...the sign will be placed within the existing frame framing that exists up there, the wood framing, which will be repainted. And in fact, the whole structure will be repainted to this color here. You're welcome to look at it. Which is intended to really match the new sign color, this grayish scheme here. It's the 1913 901 Grayslake. The area devoted...so, you could see some of the stuff, some of the gray part of the sign is located down here at the bottom, Corder Madara Inn, and up the sides as well, which sort of reduce the overall appearance of the amount of sign devoted to the Best Western corporate logo there. Here's the night version, so you can see how the illumination actually on the sides, it doesn't light up on the sides, it only illuminates the sort of the blue and the white areas of the Best Western and then the Corder Madara Inn here as well. And in order to, you know, staff made the recommendation, felt that this was an appropriate update. Obviously, the corporate logo is changing, and there are limitations to what the commission can impose on corporate logos and changing those corporate logos. So, obviously, there's limitations on what the commission can really opine on in terms of the design of the Best Western logo. But the discretion is really here around the enlargement of the area devoted to the Best Western logo. And that said, in the illumination levels, I should note that the sign is and will have dimmers on it and is also will be...the LED color temperature will be no more than 3500 Kelvin, which is the warmer color, not the bright white. An example of...if you've been by, the sort of the color scheme and whatnot is in place on the eastern facade or the eastern wall of the existing lobby structure at the Best Western today. And if you go by, I went by at night, I guess it was last Tuesday, and you can see it wasn't a really jarring, bright white. I think the LEDs that they had in there and the color temperature, which also was restricted, was, in staff's view, appropriate. Staff felt that this was a cleaner look rather than sort of having a three separate signs. It is more modern and cleaner and sort of incorporated the same design in terms of the fonts into one cohesive, more cohesive sign design than what's up there today. And also included a condition of approval that for final approval, staff would be able to go out and really set the...determine what was the appropriate brightness level by having that dimmer switch in there. So, essentially, it's an update to the current freestanding sign with a new updated logo. It's a cleaner look. It isn't larger, but staff felt it was appropriate for the existing hotel and drawing attention and providing information to the passerby on Highway 101. There are several...staff's included a draft resolution. There are specific, a couple of specific findings that relate to freestanding signs. Some of them that staff's included in the draft resolution as well as findings related to design review, which is referred to in the sign portion of the ordinance that...and staff was able to make all those findings, has included that in the draft resolution. You know, many of the findings really, when you read them, are...and some of the freestanding conditions for the freestanding sign are related to new, really refer to sort of the creation and the new freestanding sign, less about modifying an existing sign, but felt it was we should put them in here in any case and make the findings for them just to be comprehensive. So, with that, obviously, there's options available to you, options to adopt resolution number 18-011, provide direction to the applicant to modify the sign application in return with revisions, or provide direction to staff to prepare a resolution for denial. But again, staff is recommending approval of the sign application.
Thank you, Adam. Do any commissioners have questions for Adam? All right. Best Western is here. Would you like to say anything, sir?
Sure.
This on? Good evening. My name is Garrett Guerilla with Renaissance Hotels, owner of the Corder Madara Inn. Yeah, I really don't have much to add but beyond what Adam's went through pretty thoroughly. As he mentioned, Best Western introduced a new corporate logo about two years ago and has required all of its 2,000 or so hotels to adopt the logo. We are one of the last, actually, to make the changes, and they're very anxious for us to make these changes. And that's why you see today the logo actually down on the freeway because when we put our new signage up on the, around the property, Best Western made us, unbeknownst to us, frankly, well, neither the sign company, take down the old logo. So, we are anxious to make the change. Best Western does have some very rigid design requirements when it comes to signage. I don't know exactly what those are because they won't tell me. They only tell their authorized vendors. And the reason they don't tell me is that they're concerned I'm going to take the guidelines and go to my sign vendor and get the sign done. So, if you have any questions specifically about what these guidelines are, I have a sense of them, but I can't tell you absolutely.
All right. Well, that's a start. Before you go anywhere, let me ask Bob if he has any questions for Garrett.
No.
All right. Charles?
No.
All right. I have a simple question to start out with. On this submittal here from Persona Signs, it says, "Retro Frame, See Bleed Retrostruts," page eight. I have no idea what the heck that means.
That's on this page, on this first page?
It's right there on the screen. You can see it there.
I may be able to answer.
Yeah, I think Adam made it clear with that.
I can pass this around to everybody here. It was part of the structure and how they incorporate that into the actual existing frame. So, I'm happy to pass it around. I didn't include it in the packet because I didn't...wasn't necessarily relevant to the actual sign application, but nonetheless, it's going to be important for the construction of the sign.
Well, needless to say then, I now know what a bleed retrostrut is. So, that's helpful. And the gray is the gray. We don't have anything about brightness in the sign code, but would the staff be willing to go out? Well, the sign's half down now, so it's going to be up to staff then to decide if it's too bright. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, it says, "Condition of Approval Number Four," says, "Upon installation, the Planning Director may require the brightness of the sign to be dimmed to a level deemed appropriate. The determination of appropriate level shall be made at the sole discretion of the Planning Director, his or her designee." So, I will be out with Garrett. Obviously, it's got to be, I mean, the intent of having the sign is to make sure it's visible so it's not going to be, but I think recognizing the concerns we've had in the past about some signage being overly bright and sort of jarring and causing...it's also something that I recognize also is intended to be on through the night because hotel patrons may arrive at all hours, that it is subdued to the extent or can be even potentially modified or changed on a timer basis to have different levels at different times of the day. I understand.
Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. So, it's, there's more white here. It's a brighter white rather than 40-year-old white. So, it's going to be a little more, a lot more noticeable than what has been there for some time. So, the town will, may get a call or two, and I think that's partly why having a hearing for it was important. But as long as you're good to go with the brightness adjustment at the direction of the Planning Director, that's great. So, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I will ask if there's anyone here that would like to comment on this submittal. Seeing none, then we'll close public comment and bring it back up here. Charles, any commentary on this?
You know, my company does the wavefinding for SFO, and then also I've been pretty instrumental in the lighting design at SFO. And the new lighting standards that they released this year for customer satisfaction is 3500 Kelvin. The warmer color is deemed desirable by most customers and general public. It's not objectionable, like more task lighting, and so I think that's the appropriate kind of lighting standard these days. And then also, the dimmer definitely helps to fine-tune it if there is any issue that arises. So, I'm completely accepting of that. I think, you know, the sign color is a nice matte gray, you know, very clean and a very contemporary look, so I'm very happy with it.
All right.
Yeah, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Dr. Bundy?
One thing that I've learned on the commission is the importance of branding for companies and corporate logos. And I think fortunately, this is something that's going to be acceptable to Corder Madara residents, and primarily, the impact is on travelers on 101. So, I can support this.
All right. Other than the fact that I will send my comments on the design to Best Western directly, you know, I think we can take a vote on this. Do I hear a motion, please?
In the matter of sign permit application number PL-2018-0049 SPC, to replace the existing signage for Best Western/Corder Madara Inn located on the previously approved, double-sided freestanding sign with new Best Western/Corder Madara Inn signage at 56 Madera Boulevard,
I second.
All right. Turn the vote.
Let's see where it is. Sorry. Commissioner Bundy?
Approve.
Commissioner Friedman has recused. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Metcalf? Commissioner Chase?
Aye. And this sign does not have a appeal right, does it?
It actually would.
No.
Read those. Thank you for the reminder. Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the Planning Department. Corder Madara Town Hall, a $300 filing fee is required.
All right. Thank you, Garrett. All right. Then we're going to move on to our next item. Yes?
So, I need to recuse myself from this next hearing. I'm within the 300-foot radius and so therefore have a...
Damn it.
Conflict, so...
Move.
[laughing]. I'll upgrade. No problem.
All right. How's your coffee, tea, or me?
It's great.
All right. So, we have before the remaining three commissioners, 301 Corder Madara Town Center for Flores Restaurant. This is a design review, precise plan amendment, and sign permit number PL-2018-0050-DRC, 0055-SP, and 0054-PP to modify the exterior elevation, outdoor patio, and add two illuminated signs for the proposed Flores Restaurant at the town center. So, it's been vacant, and Mr. Boyle, you're going to fill it?
Yes, I'm going to provide the report to have it filled, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this is a design review and actually precise plan amendment and sign permit for the modification of the existing space formerly was PF Chang's, is now going to become Flores Restaurant. The location within the town center is in the southeast corner, shown here, and it will be visible from both Highway 101, exits and entrances to Highway 101, as well as Town Falls Drive. So, for those reasons, it's coming before you as an exterior change to a shopping center that's visible. So, the overall modifications do not involve increasing square footage, increasing height, or really changing the building envelope in any way. Mainly there are aesthetic, mainly aesthetic modifications. There are a few structural and other modifications that I'll talk about. Overall, the tile area around the entry will be removed, and the rust-colored stucco will be changed, will be, not removed, but changed and repainted to a China white color. The wainscoting stone down below will stay. And I'll talk a little bit more of some of the details. First is talking about the entryway, probably the most significant change. Again, going from the stone to the white, the awning or eve above the door will be removed, and a new one will replace it, which is quite a bit wider. The glass, the glazing area, I believe, stays the same. The front door itself changes. The two lighted areas to the left and right of the door generally stay the same with some treatments in the upper portion, as you can see. And of course, a new sign, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Also, another little detail is the stairway will be painted. Again, that'll be hand-painted, similar to the sign itself will be hand-painted onto the wall. Also, another little detail is the stairway will be painted. Again, that'll be hand painted, similar to the, the sign itself will be hand painted onto the wall to give that particular look that the restaurant is looking for. This is an image of the new entryway in the evening, just to give you that perspective. The next section to be modified is, is the patio area. Patio area which faces one oh one. Some shots of the existing space. Here are pictures of the interior of, of the patio, looking out towards one oh one and the parking lot. Sure, the applicant will talk about it more, but in general, the intention is to make this a, a more protected space, both from the wind and sound, and not have people looking directly at the, at the parking lot. So what will, will happen will, you know, a, a CMU wall will be constructed, and I have a sample of that down here. There, the plans show six of those stacked up vertically, and each one kind of a, a panel type of configuration to hold them together. So six vertical and I think five horizontal, each in a metal frame, and those will be, you know, attached to the, the lower structure. This, of course, will be very closely examined by our Building Department to make sure it's, meets the code. You know, this came up as part of the review, and I wanted to make sure the applicant, you know, provided that, so what actually gets built is, or what you see here today is, is close, if not identical, to what actually gets built. Going a little bit more detailed, lower right shows what's happened, happens to the seating area. First, those columns get painted a lighter color. A, a radial bench seat is laid along the, the exterior perimeter. And, and then a CMU wall is actually constructed right behind your seating area. And behind that is a shelf for, for plantings. And the, where do I go? No. The, and then the actual frame that holds those glass pieces, that frame, the glass gets removed, but the frame itself remains, and that's a fabric material is placed there, and that's shown actually on the materials board there. The applicant can talk more about how that is. This is, this is, this is the fabric material here. This is the China white that's proposed for the exterior. So that's the configuration, and it creates that, that bench seating. And then this is a, a view of that patio area at night. In terms of landscaping, all the landscaping remains. There's no proposal to remove any of the trees or, or remove any of the landscaping. They just contend, intend to keep it as is and, and, you know, maintain it, and of course, we'll, we'll ask them to maintain it and not, it won't get damaged during construction. If it does get damaged, it'll need to be replaced. So moving on next to the modifications, what I call the, the southeast elevation, or, you know, the elevation closer to the, the middle of the town center. Again, not a whole lot different. Sign on, on the upper right, that wall wraps around. There's an accessibility ramp right there, and that will stay. And another thing that takes, that changes is these, these panels, which again are shown on that materials board. They're more or less louvers right now, those brown items above the windows. Those kind of darkish brown louvers will be removed, and they were replaced with the, the wood teak plats or, or boards that I described in the staff report. Slated teak boards, they're called. So the louver panels replaced by those slated teak boards. And then specifically, probably the most structural changes is currently we have three windows facing the patio. And two, actually, two of those are windows. To the left are the windows, and to the right is a, is a door. So those will be changed, the, the farthest left window will remain. And the two to the right will be removed and replaced with what you see here, which is a, an opening, you know, bless you. An accordion door system that opens up, and then to a right is a, a door and counter area for waitstaff to provide food to the, the folks eating at the patio. So those are the, the, the structural changes to that elevation. A little bit better view is this here in the the floor plan. So green, the left green circles are the existing areas focusing on, and the right two green circles are the, the changes from, you know, just a takeout door more or less to a patio bar type of situation, and then the accordion doors on the lower, lower right green circle. The arbor itself doesn't, doesn't change, so that remains, and this also shows the, the proposed seating arrangement. Again, just, again, showing that elevation, the changes with the, the window on the left staying the same, and the two windows being removed and replaced by those larger paneled sections. Nighttime view of the southeast elevation. Just some of the neighboring storefronts, just to give you an idea of, you know, the eclectic mix of storefronts at the town center. This application also involves new signs. In the past, there was the PF Chang's above the front door. Now the two signs are, are proposed, again, to be painted on the wall. Three goose neck type of lights will come down and shine upon both signs. Total sign, proposed sign area is approximately twenty-nine feet. Maximum allowed is a hundred, so they're way under the the maximum. Again, this is showing the, the southeast elevation sign at night, and then the type of lighted, lighting that they're proposing. I did check with the, the architect, and there was an error on their sign. Folks, they, they accidentally put the, the awning in, or, I should say, the, the top of the fascia in gold. That's incorrect. And also, they left the brown around the windows. That's incorrect as well. The, the exterior will not be what you see here. It will be what you saw before, which is, which is that lower, lower right, again, all, all white on the, the top and all white around the windows. So I'll make that note on the, on the plans. I'll probably have them change them. Again, neighboring storefronts, and, and that really concludes my report. Staff is able to make all of the findings for design review and the precise plan amendment, which are pretty much identical findings. And again, lighting, conditions of approval for requiring dimmers and timers. Question of Kelvin came up, as you, as you can see in the, in the packet dealing with lighting. The Kelvin rating for the exterior signs is twenty-two, twenty-seven hundred. And so it meets all the qualifications of the town, and staff recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Commissioners, Jennifer, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
Can you just clarify then, on the exterior, if you go back to the photo? Yeah, okay. So is the top band gray or is it white?
The decimate, the top band is, is white, the same, China white.
Okay. It's the same Benjamin Moore China white, so it's all the same color?
Yes.
Okay.
One paint color proposed.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, first F?
Yeah, Phil, could you clarify, this is the CMU, that's the outer one. What is the, the C of U that is the it? Well, yeah, I'm just pointing to the, the one right there, the example. What is the C of U that's the inner, that I guess is the back of the seating, radial seating area? Is that just a?
It's this fabric, I think. They're putting in the panels of this fabric, I believe.
I think the applicant can speak to that. I believe when we had discussions.
The applicant can clarify, but I believe that wall that you're basically leaning up against, I believe that's going to be CMU material as well. But it's not visible.
But it's something that's solid probably as a backrest.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
And so where does, where does this silver?
So the, the fabric. So the, the fabric material is actually, right here, you can just, it's difficult to see in this image, but if you, if I was to zoom in, that, that's the metal frame of the, for the existing glass, and then the fabric is right behind there.
So they're essentially replacing the glass panels with fabric panels?
Correct.
And, and the structural components for the outer CMU are really the metal brackets that hold that?
Your microphone.
It is on. He just didn't have his, his rockstar voice up against it.
The, it's the metal brackets on the corners that hold that in place, and then there's mortar that keeps them there, but because there's no rebar or anything like that, it's the metal brackets that are stabilizing it.
I'll, I'll defer to the applicant on that, but yes, definitely the, the metal frame exists, and, but I'm not exactly sure how each block will be connected to each other and whether or not rebar will be used, because I, you know, if you, if you use rebar on this, these blocks, I believe you're going to see the rebar.
Right, I'm assuming they're, they're, the metal frames are the reason that you don't have to use rebar on this. Just, and then one other thought, just to the, the right of where the patio is going to be reworked is the area, a wall with vegetation on it. Is that part of, of this property, or is that with the bookstore?
That is, I'm quite sure, part of this property. If I look at the, yeah, yeah, here's the, the floor plan. So there's a, see the service ramp, where it says service ramp in the upper right? And then just between the service ramp and that four-top table is the planter area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a town center. Monte Stevens is here. He might tell us what is service and what is, what else it covers. The applicant, if you guys would like to step up to the microphone and make your presentation, that would be great.
Hi, everyone. My name is Oswaldo Messia. I'm with Crown Architecture, and we are the architects for the, for the remodel of the former PF Chang's restaurant now to be Flores. So here you can just see some of the inspirational images that we base our design on. And so we have the, a little description of the proposed restaurant. So it's basically what we're proposing is, you know, a casual restaurant that offers, you know, the, the menu is Mexican food, and most of the ingredients are usually, ninety-nine percent of the ingredients will be locally sourced and organic. This will be the second location of an existing Flores. It's on Union Street in San Francisco. So from the kitchen, rooted in traditional Mexican food, our dishes and flavors are not just inspiration, they are the rule. A deep respect for the cuisine and homage to tradition, to tradition and what is what set us apart. So basically, the, the menu is like a typical Mexican restaurant, but the difference is that everything that is made in Flores is made in-house, even the tortillas and, and, and every, every aspect of, of the kitchen and the cocktails and everything. So one of our ingredients is masa, the dog that is used making the fresh corn tortillas found on our menu to guarantee quality. Corn is ground by hand on site. Look for it in our quesadillas, tamales, sopas, empanadas, and taquitos. On the menu, an assortment of roasted meats, meats such as carne asada and pork chuck are available for sharing, and served with a stack of fresh, steaming hot tortillas. Small plates featuring traditional recipes passed down from generation to generation are the stars, such as the molachiladas and the whole roasted fish. If snacks and drinks at the bar are what you're after, order the tostadas de cangréjo, tamal casero, and the ceviche de pescado with a small, large group of friends. Flores is a spot for a lunch break, day-night reunions with friends, and a large party gatherings. It is the perfect venue for any occasion or no occasion at all. At the bar is kind of like something, the same philosophy, like the food, the same level of skill is found on the cocktail menu. Craft cocktails and traditional cocktails are given equal real estate. Behind the bar, we borrow from classic Mexico-inspired cocktails and take them in a slightly new direction. Think añejo sour made with black bean, aquafaba, which is the water that you get from the beans. We offer an assortment of signature cocktails that are, that, that are at once familiar. Think margaritas, but also surprising. Think the excelsior, a whiskey-based cocktail. Our knowledgeable and enterprising and pretentious bartenders can walk you through a list of notable tequilas and mezcal, and also make you a pitcher of house-made margaritas. We also carry an assortment of Mexican beer, as well as wine from Mexico, California, Spain, South America. Preference is given to small, organic, and biodynamic procedures. So we have pictures here of the existing building. The, the glass that you guys were asking for, this is the glass we will replace with, you can see on the sample board, the, the fabric. It's actually an awning fabric, so it's rated for outdoors. And this is, there is a separation you can see between the bookstore and Flores. There is this entire, it's like a courtyard where you have the trash compactor and all the, I guess is the trash is from several neighbors. So this is like a buffer in between. And on the other side, we have the, the building with the office on top and the AT&T store, but the entrance is on the other side. I didn't provide any more pictures because this is being remodeled right now from the center. So it will be different. So for the design process, at Flores, we want to continue with the success of our first Flores located in Union City, San Francisco, and bring the same atmosphere to Marin County. We believe our concept is unique to the area, and we think it will be a great addition to the culinary offerings. The aesthetics is edgy, yet sophisticated and playful in a subdued way. The restaurant interior exhibits a diverse assortment of patterns and textures representative of many cities, states, and reus found across Mexico. We have worked with local muralists, artists, metal workers to create the Mexican tile and tradition with plaster walls found through the restaurant. Walking in off the center, you'll be greeted by patterned cement floor tiles, lettered chairs sourced from Mexico, and live, and a lively bar. Past the front bar, you will find a wood folding door, which is the, the door that we'll have at the facade, that will take you into the vibrant outdoor patio and garden. Situated under a wood pergola, the existing wood pergola, we have an canopy of porcelain string and relaxed, a relaxed dining room. This will be the outdoor patio. Think of our restaurant as an assortment of conjoined but distinct spaces designed for a wide variety of uses. It's an extension of the home, the home kitchen, your favorite beachside restaurant, and the town center all rolled into one. So here you can see the main entry. So the intention here is to create an inviting facade and a visual step back while retaining the existing architecture by providing softer materials and finishes that reflect the Flores philosophy. We wanted to remove the stone that is a PF Chang's signature, the stone tile that they had all along the, the, the main entrance, and replace it with plaster to match the rest of the facade. Painted with Benjamin Moore China white, it's also on the sample board. We will replace, as Phil was saying, we'll replace those metal louvers above the windows with slat thick wood. We'll replace the existing metal awning with the, with the wood awning right here above the, the main door. The openings of the main entry and the side lights will remain the same. And we'll provide a new hand-painted sign. Also, as Phil mentioned, it will have three goose neck lights downward position. So the existing stone waistcoat that goes all along the storefront, it will remain, and and the existing plaster will be painted the same with Benjamin Moore China White throughout the entire facade. The other design focus was to provide a vibrant and intimate outdoor dining experience and enhance the town center diversity, as you can see from Phil's pictures, by providing a decorative low wall at the outdoor patio while providing a virtual noise and visual barrier from the adjacent parking lot and the freeway. This was one of the major issues we needed to resolve, given the great local weather. Also, due to the importance and impact outdoor dining has on a restaurant, we wanted to create a more intimate outdoor dining experience. So to go back to your questions regarding the CMU walls, so we will have this exterior-facing decorative CMU wall. They will have, what we want to do is create, and this was discussed with the structural engineer, we want to do is create like panels of six by four, the bricks, so it will be six feet tall. And then it will have metal framing around it with the base, and this base will be bolted into the concrete slab. And at the same time, the bricks will be, will use an adhesive that is used for these blocks that is really strong. It's not as thick as mortar, so you don't see it, it doesn't make the wall any taller, but it gets into the pores of the concrete and makes it really like a really strong bond. And then we'll have the metal framing all around with the base, and each panel will have eight bolts into the existing concrete slab. On the other side, you will have the existing metal and glass railing. And the glass railing, the glass of the metal will be removed and replaced with the fabric panels. And after that, we'll have the low wall, it's a lower, like four feet tall, CMU wall that will serve as the back of the banquet. And on top, we'll have surface-to-place diverse planter pots. And on the end of the patio over this side, there is a corner that it's created by the ADA ramp, where we won't have any sitting, and we'll have like a planter pot garden, so we can give some natural elements into the patio and make it more casual and, you know, casual and cozy with the string lights and furniture. So to see again the patio, so to integrate the indoor and the outdoor dining by removing the takeout ramp. So PF Chang's had a takeout over this window, and they had a ramp that they added to the original existing ADA ramp to be able to make it easier, so you don't have to go inside the restaurant to pick up your food. So, but the problem with that ramp is was separating the building and the indoor dining from the patio, so nobody used the patio. So what we want to do is remove the ramp, increase, bring the patio into the building and opening those wood bifold doors, so we can have a better integration between the indoor and the outdoor. So what I was saying by removing the takeout ramp was dividing the patio from the building and providing a new wood bifold door that will connect the patio to the indoor dining area. At the same time, a new low wall we serve to purposes, the back of the new banquet and as a flat surface to locate an array of planter pots, introducing a new material to enable diversity to the casual indoor-outdoor seating. The existing glazing from the metal glass patio barrier will be replaced with an outdoor-rated fabric to help achieve that intimate patio feeling while using a soft material as a visual barrier. In conclusion, our goal is to activate this important corner of the center by creating a unique identity using diverse elements, colors, and forms to help create a vibrant new restaurant. Again, here is just some of the sheets that we have on the drawings that we submitted. So this is just a location. The bookstore starts around here. This is the trash enclosure with recycling, the trash compactor, kind of like a courtyard. That's the existing, this is the existing floor plan. So this is a takeout ramp that we're removing and bringing the patio forward, closer to, adjacent to the building, opening the big door here, and have this service bar to serve the patio, so, you know, waiting times are not that long if they need water or anything like that. The wood artwork pergola will stay, ADA ramp will stay, this service ramp will remain, landscape will remain, and then some interior remodel as well is going on. This is a proposed floor plan, and you can see the decorative CMU wall. We have the metal railing with the new fabric panels. And then we have the low CMU wall that will serve as the back of the banquet for sitting along the edge. This is a little corner that will become like a planter pot garden together with the planter pots on top of the low wall. The ramp, the takeout ramp is gone, and then we're replacing it with bifold door opening and on-in window at the bar, so you can serve directly. And this will be the second ingress door. So we have the elevations that you guys already saw on the submitted drawings. And this is the detail for that CMU wall. So we will have the metal framing going around this panel of four by six. This will be a base, you can see here, the base. It will have two horizontal elements and then one vertical element to kind of like simulate, similar to an I-beam, and then it will be bolted, four on each end, the other end the same, and two on each side, so into the existing concrete deck. And that will happen all along the exterior edge of the patio. And, well, that's it, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. Stay up there, I'm sure the commissioners have some questions for you. So Jennifer, would you start, please?
Sure, thank you. I just have a few questions on the paint color. So how does, because we talked about this extensively when you guys did the Sephora project, and I'm not sure if you guys were the same architecture firm or not, but, you know, and people I think were very concerned about so much white, and I would see that being something that might be raised around this facade as well, although I actually like it. And I think Sephora turned out looking really good as well. So I'm just curious, like if you were to compare and contrast the paint colors, is it pretty similar, or is this, it's so hard to tell looking at a chip versus... Do you have a point of view on that?
Would you...
Okay.
Monte, would you step up, please? Thank you.
Hi, Monte Stevens, general manager, town center. I can't, I don't have the actual code of the color for Sephora, but it's my opinion that this is a softer muted white.
Okay.
Sephora is pretty well-known for its bright white color and its stark black, and I do not think this is the intent here.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, which is probably more of a question for you, Monte, is are you guys going to repaint that pink trash enclosure building that's between the bookstore and Flores?
Let's turn to that slide.
It looks like kind of a pink color, but maybe I'm... Yeah, that building. Does that get repainted as part of this?
We have an ongoing budget for paint that's not in our scope, but I can budget for it and actually get it done.
Or maybe 2019. I would suggest maybe you guys consider doing that.
What would be your recommendation? We are trying to, we want to stay with the original theme of town center. We don't want to get too far off. There is a lot of this salmon pink, whatever you want to call it, throughout the property, but I will tell you that I will repaint it, and we will work with Five Oh Five, our design company, on what to select.
I think it would be a nice...
I think you're right.
Upgrade, it looks a little worn and tired.
It's a good comment.
Okay, so that I would suggest. I wouldn't necessarily make it like a condition of approval, but it's a suggestion. I also had a question on the climbing vine that I believe is on the front facade. If you turn to that, and it looks like you have that remaining, and I just wanted to confirm that that would remain. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. That was an unfortunate loss on the Sephora building, when you guys, when you had to repaint it and remove the vine.
All of our vines are being fertilized to grow back. Because we did know that the property is well-known for its landscaping, it will always be well-known for its landscaping. Sephora is actually starting to climb back up, and, yeah, we'll not touch this part.
Okay. And then I think the only other just comment really is about the pergola. And I know, I mean, you manage the entire town center, so you understand this, but there are variable weather conditions, because I go there, I live across the streets, I'm there all the time. So, you know, some days it's super hot, and some days it's really windy, and I think it's a great idea, what you guys are suggesting in terms of just enclosing and making that patio more usable, because no one wants to sit there the way that it is, because it's so exposed from the elements from like the side, and it's not nice to look at the parking lot. But one thing you guys might want to consider is with the pergola, like making it more of a shade structure, because right now it's not an effective shade structure. And I just think people like shade, personally. So it's something you could, you know, you could even weave the same sun umbrella fabric if you wanted to, or do like the balance, you know, approach or something like that. But just something to consider, again, I'll leave it to you guys, but I think that it would be well-received.
Yeah, we'll take that into account.
Those are my questions and comments on the project. But overall, I think it is a very nice design and very well-done. And I like the white, so put it out there.
Thank you, Jennifer. Dr. Bundy?
Yes, I wanted to ask on the CMU that's the exterior, is that something that is typical of Mexican architecture, Spanish architecture? I see it more as California mid-century modern, you know, that you've seen in tract homes and such.
I think it's a way to reflect what original Mexican architecture used. Obviously, this is probably a different material, right, or a different way to do it, but it's more like a homage of what they used to do, same on, not only Mexico, but Hispanic cultures. They do have a lot of, we like to call it virtual enclosures. So even though it's a block and it's creating, it's separating a space from another space, you can still hear through, see through, have light going through. It's something that's very common on Hispanic architecture, yes.
I know you've got plans for a lot of plantings with these pots that you've got around. Is there a desire to have vines or something that will grow up on that?
I think it will be, for the planter pots, I think it will be more drought-resistant, Hispanic, kind of like plants like agave, cactuses, succulents, those type of plants. Something that adds to the theme of a Hispanic Mexican restaurant in this case.
Well, I'd eaten at PF Chang's many times, and I had never been on the patio, and it never seemed that inviting, so I think, you know, what you're doing here is a nice thing, the way you've opened it up. I guess the CMU exterior wall leaves me a little puzzled, though.
Hold on, okay. I'll let that, let me come back to you on that one. So there's not a lot of variety in open CMU, so I'm going to tack on to what Dr. Bundy was talking about there. And it's ubiquitous, that particular one, in certain areas of the country. So I would ask or even consider conditioning it such that that has ficus growing up, or even bougainvillea on the eastern exposure, if you could get there with that, if it got enough sun. Nor is it an exposure, not so much, but, you know, it's a, from the outside, that's a significant visual impact as you drive by. And it's repetitive, there's a lot of it. The frame will help contribute something to breaking it up. But have you thought about another way to create an element to, you know, step it in or out, or create some interest, because it is just a curving wall?
So originally, the plan was to create just a solid plaster wall, no, but to serve the purpose of enclosed patio, because the views, to be honest, are terrible, because you only see the parking lot and the ramp and the overpass for the freeway, you know. So we were thinking like, what is the least intrusive way to do that, to have an intimate area outside? But at the same time, once you're dining there, you don't feel like you're in the middle of a parking lot. So without having to build another wall that will actually completely obstruct the visual elements from inside, and, you know, like you also want people to know that there is people there having a good time and all that. So that was the purpose of using a wall that doesn't, is not 100% opaque, that doesn't let you see through or at least have a sense of what's going on. But, yeah, the original plan was to do the complete plaster wall, and we de-escalated to this, which we thought was a better solution, just not to create a 100% obstruction from the...
Okay. So...
But the idea of growing, if you guys, if the idea of growing some sort of vine or something through the wall, I mean, that's something that we call, yeah, yeah.
A couple of questions here. So there's a detail on the plans that shows a pan deck with block, a wide flange, attached to the top, and then block on top of it. And that's not what exists out there. It's a poured concrete slab that comes right up to the edge of the CMU that's there now. So I'm curious, or I'm trying to figure out if that's intended to be an extension or overhang the existing CMU?
Do you mean this detail here?
Yes, right.
So this detail is from the existing PF Chang's drawings. So we haven't had a chance to actually go underneath, because, I mean, this is still, you know, being unplanned. So, but this is from the actual structural drawings from the PF Chang's remodel.
Okay.
So we're assuming that this is true, right? We know there is like that stone wall, we don't know how it was built, like if it was, it came out here to the edge and covered this edge, or it was down here. It looks more like it was on top of this, at the outer edge of the edge of the actual slab, because the way it comes all the way to the top.
So what you have there is not going to overhang that existing CMU and be outside of it?
No.
It's going to be back inside of it?
Yes, it's going to be recessed, a little offset.
All right. And the problem with that is there's no indication in the drawing as to where that wall is below that CMU right there, other than that, there's no strict definition of where is the existing wall and where is that?
Where the existing, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, like I say, like, we didn't have a chance to underneath to check which way...
Well, that's, yeah, if you were assuming that you would put it on top, it would help to have shown the CMU wall below there instead of the wide flange that's holding up the whole pan deck. So, yeah, I couldn't tell where it was intended to land.
I understand.
So with that said, there's plenty of planting space out in front of there so that you could grow things up that would help shield this CMU wall with this open block. If that is possible, I just think it's a big expanse running around the side there. Secondly, then liberties are taken with new architectural drawings. And as a, for instance, the tree that's at the existing front of the building to the right of the door, as you face the door, you know, in the pictures, has a nice little lean to it. And then you've drawn a very nicely shaped tree there, almost as though you're replacing that tree.
Yeah, no, we're not.
Okay.
This tree?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because of the wind. We'll make it make it straight.
He's jurist, straight.
So that's the thing, we don't want to lose a mature tree like that if it's viable and healthy and all of that. But here in these existing photos of that existing CMU wall, it doesn't have anything growing up it, and that was probably a decision made by PF Chang's not to have anything on that wall. that wall or the town center. But, um, it would be, uh, lovely to have something growing up there. The ficus at Sephora is still the size it was when it was planted. It's just barely getting out of the, the pot there, so it, it needs some help. But, you know, in the time that Sephora's been approved, I've had ficus grow over a wall of mine, six feet compared to what Sephora's done. So I know it can grow better and I would love to see that here.
Okay.
Would you put something there and maybe, uh, bougainvillea there or on the side that faces south wherever possible? I would think that would be, uh, an attractive addition.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
To that? Yeah, okay. So, um. The plans that we have, um, are what you're reflecting for the color intent. The packet and the sign packet, uh, do not reflect the paint colors and the record needs to show that.
Yes.
So per Phil's commentary that the crown on the building and the window trims will not be brown, it will be white.
That's right.
Okay. And, um, let it be said that, um, this China white is not a white, white. I've looked at the Benjamin Moore chart while we've been sitting here and it's a pretty warm white relative to, uh, other whites. So compared to Sephora, it will be toned down from that.
It's a little warmer than, than super white that Sephora uses.
Yeah, many whiter whites. So let's see. One of the other problems that I think we see occur is that there's a, a growth of appendages to outdoor trellises, like heaters and shade things and a lot of kind of stuff. So in the town center design guidelines, are they open to doing that at will or at random when that becomes necessary?
Looks like it already has heaters.
I don't, are there heaters out there now?
Yeah.
Or head heaters? Okay, I didn't see them today. Um, all right, so they're there?
Yeah, they're.
Right, yeah. Oh, you're right, yep.
You don't like my, you don't like my idea of shade?
Oh, no, it's just freezing out there. I, I think that, um, for the most part, it's really cool.
And they have standing heaters also.
Yeah. So you've done a, a significant job of, uh, keeping the parking lot separated by the fabric and the CMU and a seat back and behind the seats, you're committed to the plantings there that go up high and that grow up and will actually add some more greenery to the outdoor space.
And I think these are fairly mature maples, I assume. So that probably sh, I think it's not shown as well here. It looks more, you know, open, but I think, I mean, when you look here at the space, those are pretty full trees, so I don't disagree with your, I agree with your idea of the, I like the bougainvillea idea. I feel like that's on trend with Mexico, so Mexico City, lots of houses, they have bougainvillea.
Um, are you going to change those maples? No, they're going to stay.
No.
Those are all staying, right?
Yes, yes, 100%.
Okay. So with that said, um, anything else that you would like to, Phil?
Heather, would you like to say something?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Heather Descagna, I represent Flores, the brand. And, uh, we're really excited to come to Corder Madera. This is our second location. Um, we're hoping to do very well, we're really excited, uh, we're very authentic, we're not like any other Mexican restaurant. We really pride ourselves in, uh, hand-making, um, our masa, for instance, a lot of our cornmeal that goes into a lot of our dishes. Our, uh, handcrafted cocktails are exquisite and unique. And our chef partner, who will be here most of the time, um, having his own shift here is just incredible in creating a lot of these recipes. Um, so I just kind of wanted to say, you know, thank you for, um, the opportunity to come here, um, and thank you, Corder Madera Town Center as well. And, um, we hope to make a, a positive impact to the community, add, add some serious value.
Thank you. For you guys, I did have one other question I wanted to ask about, and that is that on the existing window trim, there's lights on there now. Um, the lights are going where in the new plan? On the outside of the building? Yeah. Oh, they're just, yeah, they're in a different place. Yeah, so they're not going to be on the, on the window trim like they are now, right?
You mean these concerts?
No, there's those, but there are, um, there are lights on the, uh, right there to the bottom right there, uh, bottom right in, yeah, that window there.
I see these ones.
Yeah, yeah. They're going, right, okay.
Do we want to, I have one more comment now that you said that, and I'm looking at this. You guys have like hanging, um, pendant lights or? Yeah, do those need to be more night-friendly? It looks like, do you guys have the detail of what that fixture looks like yet?
No, it's gonna be.
Can you speak, sorry, just can you speak in the microphone? Thank you.
It's, they're gonna be, uh, on that theme, so like iron, broad iron with glass and probably like really low, uh, like light fixture, the, the bulb.
Okay.
It's not something that we're going to use to illuminate the restaurant, it's more like a decorative, uh.
Okay.
Light.
So we probably do want to include those, some sort of.
Staff will review those when they come in.
Staff will review that fixture and make sure that's night sky compliant, right?
Yeah, that it doesn't have an outward cast into the parking lot or visible from a distance, right? It doesn't sound like it will be.
Yeah.
I would hesitate from saying night sky compliant because that's, that's not, that's going to require them to be shielded, not decorative.
Not night sky compliant.
But, but we will, we will review them to make sure that they're not gl, casting glare onto public areas.
The one other comment now that I have is, would you guys consider adding bike parking somewhere in where you're taking out the ramp or, because a lot more people are biking and I'm one of them.
Same.
Currently, as part of our South Plaza improvements, which are on schedule, will be completed on, in, um, mid-October, we have some, um, bike racks that are going to go here.
Okay.
So they're right in front.
Okay, great.
All right. Did I conclude the commission questions?
Yes.
All right. Nothing else from the applicant then? All right. Thank you then. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the diocese here for deliberation. Dr. Bundy?
Uh, looking forward to having Flores here there. I haven't eaten at, uh, Union Street, but the reviews certainly are really great on it, so I think it's going to be a nice addition here. Peter has articulated my concerns about, uh, uh, CMU outer wall and I concur with his suggestion about the plantings. I think the bougainvillea would be great or some other things that would, uh, sort of screen it, shield it a little bit. That's all.
Ms. Friedman?
I, I would agree, I think it's a great design and we're very excited to have Flores here. I think it's going to be an awesome addition, so welcome. And, uh, I also agree with the idea of some additional plantings and shade with the pergola.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion with the, uh, request or the condition of planting that will grow up the, uh, the new CMU on the outside in the form of bougainvillea and/or ficus or a substitute, uh, submitted. And, um, if they want an overhead trellis, they can get Ocatillo, uh, from Arizona, just kidding. So that said, do I hear a motion?
So just to clarify that, the only proposed additional landscaping is bougainvillea to go up the, the CMU wall.
And ficus or?
Or ficus.
Yeah, and/or ficus, yeah. Um, I would like to see the ficus on the eastern face and, uh, bougainvillea on the southern face. It, it'll do well southern, but it won't do well eastern.
I can make him, I can make a motion, uh, to approve design review, precise plan amendment and sign permit number PL dash two zero one eight dash zero zero five zero dash DRC and zero zero five five dash SP and zero zero five four dash PP to modify the exterior elevation, outdoor patio and add two illuminated signs for the proposed Flores Restaurant at the town center with the additional condition of approval that some plantings that may include bougain, bougainvillea and ficus are added, um, to the CMU wall area.
I'll second.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Metcalf? And Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
So thank you very much.
When are you guys going to open?
October.
October.
Not po, not possible.
We look forward to it.
We, we didn't get a menu submittal with this?
I will send it.
And a reservation at the Union Street facility?
Let me know.
Can't get in, all right.
It'll be awesome. Very excited about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want your plans back?
Yeah, so I live on Manona, like, uh, it, so here's the, so it's up there, and maybe it's five hundred, what, five hundred meters, five hundred foot radius.
I kind of like the concrete blocks. Kind of retro. But I think it was a good suggestion.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to continue on with our business. Uh, you won't get my set, I'll hold on to it, so.
Oh, here, do you want this one back as well? Thank you.
Ciao. All right, so, um, we've gotten through the hard stuff and now, um, we're on to business item, which is to discuss the possible postponement of the annual organizational meeting, election of planning commission chair and vice chair and cancellation of the July 10th meeting. Normally that would be our meeting to vote, so Adam?
Yeah, no, I think there's a couple of things at play here that I wanted to, um, have the commission opine on and consider. One is, uh, at this point, um, it seems that we, we don't have another item to put on the, uh, July 10th meeting agenda at this point. So we've, we're sort of here and there, I don't know what's happened, but recently we'll take it, there's, there's just, uh, we don't have a project to consider at that meeting. So, um, the only thing that we would be considering at that meeting would be the annual organizational meeting, which would be the, um, also include the swearing-in of the new planning commissioner and then setting the vote for the chair and the vice chair. The other thing as well is I know Commissioner Chase is going to be out at that meeting as well. And given a couple of those things, we, I was, I wanted the commission to discuss amongst themselves whether or not it would be appropriate to sort of postpone to July 24th. I know our rules and procedures recently adopted, um, talked about having the annual organizational meeting, I should quote it. I, I believe it says the first meeting in July, I don't, so that would, if we postponed it, I think we'd still be.
First regular meeting of the planning commission in July, yeah.
So if it was canceled, then you would do that in, in the second meeting in July and I would say at, which would be the first meeting. So the, at this point, I am considering also, um, a discussion of, uh, the hotel, um, policy regarding FAR at the second meeting in July, on July 24th. So I, I think we will be having a, a second meeting. So with that piece or those pieces of information, I'll leave it to the commission commissioners to discuss how they want to approach the next meeting. And it is, you know, we're happy to answer any other questions that you may have about that.
All right, commissioners? Um, I'm going to be gone, um, and they don't have anything, so.
Yeah.
I, uh, move that we give our hard-working staff a break and, uh, have the first meeting, uh, July 24th.
Second it. Okay. I, I didn't know, we got a motion, so I'll say all, all in favor of that.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll, that was easy.
Okay.
You have to pick a leader without a leader.
I'm flattered, yeah. Okay, so, um, now we have commissioner reports. So, um, Bob, you were at the last meeting, I was there for a while, but you hung on.
I did. Yeah, the, uh, the last meeting, uh, was really a love feast, uh, for Carla Condon and Diane First with, uh, many, uh, of our elected representatives, uh, giving special recognition awards for the, their tenure on the town council. The Diane Steinhauser, uh, gave a very interesting one because they've really butted heads over the, uh, this flyover that was proposed here, but she, she gave a very nice, uh, presentation as well as, uh, made the case for the half-cent transportation tax, which was approved, uh, four zero one with, uh, Bob Ravazio absent. Amy's, uh, went through the second hearing and was approved. Todd gave a very concise, detailed, uh, overview of the budget and what was going to be involved in that, uh, that, uh, was, was, was quite thorough. The, um, one, one area that, that, uh, I was interested in was a, a discussion, and I didn't realize that, uh, Corder Madera had been one of the last towns to require laterals to be tested, uh, on the sale of the homes, but evidently that is going through at this point, which will, I, I guess, get us in, uh, step with all the other towns and, uh, hopefully eventually reduce some of the, uh, water intrusion into the laterals that overload the, the central Moran septic system, uh, central Moran sanitation. So, uh, that was, uh, that was about all that I had from the meeting. Anything that you also noticed?
No, nothing of, uh, import, it was probably the best budget report I've seen in years.
Yeah, I agree.
And it was, um, understandable. So, uh, it was really great and, um, I'm sorry to see Diane First and Carla leave. It'll be a new council next time around. So, Mr. Wolf, um, that leaves you.
Yeah, no, I, I actually don't have anything to report. I was going to mention about the budget, but I think you got that, um, squared away. Um, I think we will be having a, um, well, I think July 3rd, there will be a council meeting where the new council members will be sworn in, so, uh, that will be a, obviously a, um, a new significant change. And I have had conversation, um, just with, with Todd about potentially, um, in the, in the relatively near term, at some point, once we, people get settled a little bit, but having a conversation like we've had in the past between the planning commission and the council, given the, the new members of the council. In the past, we have had from time to time, a sort of a, um, an, an agenda setting or discussion between the council and, and prior, sort of setting, priority-setting meeting and, uh, um, where it's open to the public, but more of a strategy session. But, so that would be, um, something to, that we were considering and, and obviously will be discussed with the council to see if they're interested in that as well. Uh, but I don't have any other items. Obviously, I was out at the last meeting and back now and looking forward to.
So, um, item three under seventy-three then is what we've just said we'll do on the second, the 24th of July, swearing.
Correct.
And, um, election of officers. And then that takes us to item four, future agenda items.
And again, as per our rules and procedures, this was really reserved for, um, it could be the commission, but it was also reserved for any member of the public who wished to have an item considered would, in writing, send something to, um, it could be to the commission or ultimately make its way to the staff. Um, and staff would, if we had something, a written request. Um, and staff would, if we had something, a written request, um, put that forward after staff was able to consider it as well and we might be able to address it, or if it was directly related to the commission business, bring that forward under this agenda item and to discuss when that item might be able to be heard or put on the agenda in the future.
It would be not inappropriate then, as the other commissioners, if they had anything they had, as, they'd like to see on the agenda.
Yeah, what I would, what I would request is if we do, under this, you could request that, uh, it be considered and then I would put it on for the next, uh, for the next agi, uh, next, under the next meeting's agenda, and we could actually more formally discuss, uh, when it put on. I, regarding, I will say one thing from the council that came up. I don't know if it was this last meeting or the meeting before, but there was a request for, at open time from a member of the public to, uh, for the council, and, and that means also going to be the commission to, to discuss, um, short-term rentals and Airbnb, um, and the council seemed interested in having that discussion again as well.
That's a good conversation.
Yeah.
Cause I know there's, I think right now we have like a 30-day limit, but that's not the case in, like, Mill Valley and other places.
It's all different everywhere else than, yeah.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, I think it's worth studying, you know, what other neighboring towns are doing and also sort of what are the benefits or the perceived risks of having it be 30 days? Frankly, I don't care for it because...
It's her last, she's going, she's going rogue because it's her last meeting. She's like...
Give her a little latitude, right?
Tell, tell, what else do you wanna say, or Commissioner Friedman?
I think it's worth discussing.
And you'll show up for that.
I'll be there.
It's a warning.
I'll watch it, I'll watch it on, on video.
We'll wait till we have the Twitter feed on the screen. Bob, were you gonna say anything?
Uh, I mean, it sounds like the short-term rentals would be a good topic for discussion with, jointly with the planning commission and council. And one other thought that, uh, I have had in the past is really looking at our freestanding signs. I think, uh, certainly, uh, you know, Best Western, they're right on 101, and some of the others are on 101, but, uh, trying to get a handle on, uh, freestanding signs and the necessity for them.
Yeah.
Especially in the age of GPS. And, and, uh, what would be the rationale for them if you're really not right on 101? Though, something to think about.
Uh, I was gonna, uh, say something about signage and that, um, it's an old sign ordinance that needs an update. And we have nothing to discuss or to, to discuss lumens in, in any way, right? Distance from square footage of, you know, and, and any way to gauge how bright is a sign other than, uh, uh, disposition, right? So, I, there must be some guidelines somewhere for distance from a certain square footage, blah, 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 how bright is that and so forth. I, I would think that would be something to consider as well as, to Bob's point, um, I know, um, there are, uh, upcoming discussions about signage and I, I would love to have, be a little more prepared with, uh, uh, some study session or, uh, possible, um, revision to the ordinance, which would probably be a long process, but, uh, you know, it, it's ancient.
It's a relative ancient, but, yeah, no, I, I hear ya, absolutely.
I think it's nineteen eighty-something.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, that all on commissioners and staff?
Minutes is the last name.
Yeah, before we go to the minutes, any, uh, comments on the minutes from...
No.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting would be adjourned.